Awesome. Welcome, everybody. Appreciate everyone coming out this evening. We're going to have some important presentations tonight, so appreciate that. If we could please call the roll.
Mayor Breckus.
Here.
Vice Mayor Alvin, President, Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Here.
Councilmember Kuzinski.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. If you'll please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. You know, we are so blessed and fortunate in this town because we do have such a diversity of individuals and groups, and we do live in harmony. And that is truly a blessing, and we're truly fortunate for it. And this evening, we have a proclamation to appreciate and show our thanks for the recent 5K, which is all about celebrating that diversity. Russell, if you could read that in?
Yes, Mayor. We have a proclamation that we will read into the record. This proclamation is to recognize Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month, which is April 2023. So whereas Sikhs have been living in the United States for more than 120 years, and during the early 20th century, thousands of Sikh Americans worked on farms, and lumber mills and mines, and on the Western Pacific Railroad lines. And whereas Sikhism is the fifth-largest religion in the world, and today there are more than 25 million Sikhs worldwide, and an estimated 500,000 Sikh Americans. And whereas Sikh Americans pursue diverse professions and make rich contributions to the social, cultural, and economic vibrancy of the United States, including services members of the United States Armed Forces, and significant contributions to our great nation in agriculture, information technology, small businesses, the hotel industry, trucking, medicine, and technology. And whereas Sikh Americans distinguish themselves by fostering respect among all people through faith and service. And whereas on April 15, 2022, I'm sorry, April 15, 2023, marks the two-year anniversary of the devastating act of deadly violence at the FedEx facility in Indianapolis, and we honor the eight individuals who were murdered, including four Sikhs, and numerous lives that were forever impacted. And whereas this year also marks the 11-year anniversary of the August 5, 2012 mass shooting at the Sikh temple Oak Creek, Wisconsin, wherein a gunman murdered six Sikh Americans and permanently injured several. And whereas the town of Southwest Ranches is committed to educating citizens about all religions, the value of religious diversity, tolerance grounded in First Amendment principles, a culture of mutual understanding, and the diminution of violence. And whereas today the town of Southwest Ranches seeks to further the diversity of its community, and afford all residents the opportunity to better understand, recognize, and appreciate the rich history and shared experiences of Sikh Americans. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Town Council of Southwest Ranches, on this 13th day of April 2023, to hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 to be Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month. Signed by the Mayor, Steve Breckus.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all. And I think there's another presentation that we have as well. Yeah. Let's, how do we?
Why don't we do pictures with the proclamation first, and then we'll do that in the second presentation?
Tows.
proclamation, recognizing the Sikhs living in South Florida, and the fact that we want to be part of this community as much as possible. And you have facilitated a wonderful event that has been going on for five years now, and we really, really appreciate that not only you have your staff that has given us tremendous support in making that 5K run for five years, very successful event, but at the same time, you have, this is second year, you have recognized April as a awareness month, so we really appreciate that. On behalf of the entire South Florida Sikh community, we thank you.
Hello, Town Council and members of the town of Southwest Ranches. My name is Purnit Singh.
My name is Jopit Paul Singh.
On behalf of the Sikh Youth Association, we'd like to thank everyone that helped with the success of the 5th Annual Unity in Diversity 5K Run/Walk. We had over 500 runners and over 200 volunteers. We raised over $11,000 to donate to the town's college scholarship fund. This year was one of our biggest events ever. This was also the first year that we worked with other religious organizations, namely Hartway Church and Mission Vita Church.
We would also like to thank Alex Fernandez, Marlins World Series pitcher, for grand marshaling at our event this year. We would also like to give a special shout-out to Detective Habalas, who has always helped out in our event each year. He is retiring this year, so we would like to thank his continuous support and service. We would like to thank the support of the Town Council members and Mayor to make this a successful race once again. We are looking forward to growing our partnership with the town with an even more successful event next year. Thank you. We would like to present the check now, too.
This is their birthday, all right?
For those that may not know, this donation goes to South West Ranches.
All right. The next item on our agenda isn't on our agenda. There's a gentleman here that has been involved in our town and protected our town, served the residents of our town, has become a member of the family of our town, and he has done an amazing job serving our town. And we just can't express our appreciation. Jeff, Detective Jeff Habalas with Davie PD. Jeff, you've done an amazing job. You have truly become a member of the family of Southwest Ranches, residents all over town. I think they know you better than they know me. And so we appreciate all that you've done, and we wanted to take just a moment to thank you. And I have a proclamation that I'd like to read into the record as well. So let me do that. Whereas Jeff Habalas was born in Miami, Florida on December 1, 1959.
Young guy.
A young guy, yeah. I guess he's ready for retirement. I guess that works. I guess that works. Whereas he graduated from Miami Springs Senior High in 1978, and went on to earn an associate's degree in criminal justice in 1980. Whereas he began his career in law enforcement in 1982 with the Hialeah Police Department, where he received numerous awards for life-saving actions, and Combat Cross, Matorious Service, Officer of the Month, Officer of the Quarter during his 22-year career. And whereas he joined the Davie Police Department in 2004, and has served on the Road Patrol, as the PIO, as the Human Resources Background Investigator, the Field Force Unit, and the Criminal Investigations Unit. Whereas throughout he has distinguished, whereas throughout his distinguished Davie Police career, Officer Habalas has received numerous awards, including the Chief's Award, Officer of the Month, Distinguished Service Award, 15 official commendations, and too many thank-yous from residents to recount, that's for sure. Whereas on January 19, whereas in January of 2019, Officer Habalas was assigned to serve as the detective for Southwest Ranches. Whereas during this time, he became a trusted and relied-upon member of the Southwest Ranches family, and we have learned more about his personal pursuits, including his black belt in judo, his fishing with his sons, beekeeping, blacksmithing, and personal time with his girlfriend, Ally, and their dog. And whereas, he has served the town of Southwest Ranches with professionalism, humanity, integrity, and passion. Whereas today, the town of Southwest Ranches seeks to honor the career, the service of Officer Habalas, has provided to South Florida in general, and to our community specifically. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the town of Southwest Ranches, on the 13th day of April 2023, does hereby proclaim April 19, 2023, as Officer Jeff Habalas Day in the town of Southwest Ranches.
Never thought I was going to get a day out of it.
So I'll let you go ahead. Go ahead and continue.
All right, Jeff. Just to be sure, and I know you don't like surprises, and I don't have a big check for you, so.
Jeff, Jeff, get closer.
Chief, if you could come up. Mayor and council members, we appreciate the time you've given us to, you know, honor or value a member of our police department. So for your 40 years of law enforcement experience and dedication to the service in this profession, right, to the city of Hialeah, the town of Davie, and of course, the residents of Southwest Ranches, we present you with this certificate of service, signed by the chief. And of course, you got your own day. None of us get to say that, right?
I never got a day.
And this plaque. I'm sure you can add to your desk, you got a few, again, for your dedicated service to the communities. Of course, you've made an impact, not only to these communities, but with the members of the departments that you've served. And that's something to take home to your next chapter. So thank you, chief.
Congratulations. Now it's all your, it's time for your speech.
Well, when I came out here, I didn't know I'd be out here this long. It was like a summer job that I never left. But I want to thank you, and the town, the residents, the HOAs. I'm not really good at this, but. Everybody thinks it's easy to leave, but it is. But I want to thank you. You're going to be left in good hands. Eddie's going to take care of you, and the department is growing, and you're in good hands. And I'm not going far. I'll still be available for B calls. But I want to thank you.
Well, a job well done.
Thank you.
Jeff, and.
Thank you, Jeff.
You've definitely earned the retirement, and we thank you.
Mayor, if I may.
Yeah.
Jeff, I just, I want to say thank you to you. I remember that day back in January 2019. You came into my office, you started talking, you haven't stopped yet. You're absolutely going to be missed. You've just been a great addition to our staff. We thank you for everything you've done here. We wish you all the best. I think you're going to be the busiest retired guy I've ever known with all the hobbies you have. But don't forget your friends and come back and visit us. Thanks. Jeff, you're going to take a picture with the team.
Oh.
You're a fireman. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not too bad.
Not too bad by me. Not as bad as.
Yeah, exactly.
But did you see pictures of what I got?
Unbelievable.
The entire runway is underwater.
I saw it.
It's shocking.
Crazy.
They grow burgers.
Yeah, it's crazy.
From my, it was in both manners, 20 inches of rain in his yard. And there was a king tide yesterday on top of it all.
Thank you.
Good night, folks.
Yeah, good night, and thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
I had a pulled tooth pulled yesterday. Yeah. I was playing tug-of-war with my doggy, and I had it right at knuckle height, and this hit me in the right front tooth, and didn't lengthen it out, but it loosened it up well enough. So I'll have, I got an implant, so it'll be six months of wearing this fake tooth, and I got a plate in my mouth. I'm not going to stay much tonight.
All right. Let's go ahead and resume the meeting. The next item on our agenda was the presentation for a stormwater master plan. I was joking with Newell that it got washed away, so it's not going to be on the agenda this tonight. But actually, even before the storm, we had some conversations, and Rod, we decided to kind of redo how we were going to do this, and send it to the drainage committee first, so they would have a chance to look at it, provide any input or thoughts they have on it first, and then it'll come back to the council. So it will be back, but it's just appropriate that it goes to the drainage committee first, as it's, they did a lot of work, and a lot of the pre-work preparation for it. So it's, we want to get their input on it. So we're skipping that item, we'll leave that for a future meeting, and move on to item number six, which is the annual comprehensive financial report. Emil, you have some thoughts on that?
Thank you. Thank you. It's been a good year, a good first year. Thank you, Mayor. I mean, I want to introduce and acknowledge the people actually to make this happen for this year. Thank you. Tonight, we're presenting the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year '22, for your acceptance. And the report has been uploaded to the town's website, and a hard copy is at the front desk at the recession here in Town Hall. Just anyone happens to come here and wants to look at the hard copy is available. It can be printed online as well. And this is a great time for us to thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, for your trust and guidance. Andy, our town administrator, for his leadership and support. All the departments who actually assisted, contributed, and provided their time and dedication to this work. At the same time, more specifically and especially to the finance department staff, Rich, our controller, Vanessa, our senior procurement and budget officer, Arianna, our accountant, and from the public works department to Susan, who actually assisted with all the graphics on this report. We want to recognize our auditors, Keith McCullough. They were a tremendous asset and assistant, especially this being my first year with the town. They were always available, which actually was a huge help for me myself to transition into the process. Thank you, Stephen, Michael. They're here, and I will probably in a few minutes just roll this presentation back to them. But before I do that, I want to highlight a couple items in this report. First, the town continued to maintain a healthy financial situation. And for everyone looking at the screen, that's pretty much just the cover sheet of the report, which is, as I indicated before, is available online. The total unassigned fund balance for fiscal year '22 for the town was 5.4 million, which is 36.6%. Last year was 5.5, compared to 31.1%. The main reason, although the fund balance, the main reason of the decrease year over year is not necessarily because restricted went down. It just happens that we identify a classification of restricted funds that actually corresponded to the building fund, for the building department, associated to unassigned fund balance. So it's pretty much just a reclassification. That's the reason for the decline of 100 when compared to last year. The unassigned fund balance represents about four and a half months of operations. The GFOA best practices recommends two months, and we actually double that by two and a half months. It's also important to mention that during the budget process, council authorized the utilization of fund balance to subsidize the fire assessment. That was at a rate of a little over $500,000 a year for the next three years, including this year, through 2025. So that taken into account, it's very safe to acknowledge and recognize the move by council, given the fact that the town shows a very fiscal responsibility and financial situation as we speak. It's also no, important to mention that the total debt for the town decreased by $820,000. And now, for fiscal year '22, that's going to be, the total balance is going to be 8.2 million. This, the past fiscal year 2021, the town received the GFOA Certificate of Achievement Award for financial reporting. We believe that this report is in compliance amid those requirements, and will be submitting it as well in this month. With that said, I want to introduce Keith McCullough's team here, present to answer any questions regarding the audit process. Here with us, Stephen Emery is our engagement partner, and accompanying him is Michael Barnett, the account manager.
Thank you very much, Emil. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council. My name's Stephen Emery. I'm the engagement partner. And first of all, I'd like to say that we very much so appreciate the opportunity to serve the town. And I'm going to go over a couple of highlights from our audit, some of the reports that we issued in the report that Mr. Lopez just described. First, we have our independent auditor's report. What this states is that the numbers within this annual comprehensive financial report are materially accurate as a result of our audit. It also states that we conducted our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. And we also conducted our audit in accordance with government auditing standards. So that is a slightly different focus from a typical type of audit. And of course, you're required to have such an audit. The main focus is on things like fraud, waste, and abuse, so we conduct audit procedures tailored to that focus. We also issue another report that specifically describes our audit in accordance with the government auditing standards. So our focus there is whether or not the town was compliant with laws, rules, and regulations, grant agreements, and things of that nature. It also discusses our opinion on the internal controls that the town has over items such as those. And so both of the reports that we issued are considered to be clean opinion. So we had no findings, and we had no issues in dealing with management. Additionally, one thing that I'd like to note that is very rare, we did not have to propose any adjustments to the books when we received them in order to issue the clean report. So that's really important, because what that means is the, all the work that your good finance department is doing throughout the year is accurate materially, so you can rely on the interim data that you receive in order to make decisions about the town's finances. A lot of my other talking points, Emil already stole, so. But to kind of highlight on that, not a lot of municipalities do have that level of cushion. So the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, they recommend that you have at least two months of unassigned fund balance. That means fund balance that you didn't already commit elsewhere, or that's not restricted by third parties, or it's not tied up in net assets and things like, or in capital assets and things like that. You want to have that in case of a rainy day, essentially. They, GFOA recommends two months. You have about four to five months. So that's a good cushion, you know, especially when there's, could be unexpected expenditures on the horizon. One other thing I'd like to highlight that Emil touched on, during 2022, you all did receive the Certificate of Achievement of Excellence, which you've received since 2007 consecutively every single year. Essentially, what that is, is this report, it gets submitted to the GFOA, and they read it, they evaluate it, they go through a very detailed checklist to make sure that it has all the required disclosures, and that everything looks proper, and that it's all done correctly. And if it. And if it passes that test, you then receive this achievement, a certificate of achievement. So your 2021 certificate of achievement is a component of this report. We believe that your 2023 financial report is going to include the 2022 certificate, because they're going to undergo that process, and we've evaluated this document, and we've determined that it should, you all, the town should receive that certificate again. All payments on long-term debt were made timely, in accordance with the amortization schedules and the agreements that you had with your lenders. All covenants that they had in their, in the bond documents were all met by the town indicating financial health. We had no disagreements with management while we were determining what kind of policies needed to be put in place in order for these financial statements to be compliant with generally accepted accounting policies. And, you know, lastly, I would just like to say that whenever you have turnover at the finance head position, as you all did with Mr. Sherwood, they're typically, it causes a lot of disruption, specifically in the audit. We didn't encounter any of that. Emil did a really good job, and the team underneath him with Rich, they all did a great job this year. We had, as I said before, we didn't post any adjusting journal entries, which is very rare, for that to not happen. So the team did a really excellent job. They were very easy to deal with. They were always available when we needed to discuss anything with them. And despite implementing a new kind of complex standard that Gatsby put forth with leases, where a lot of leases have to go, any lease that's material has to go on your balance sheet, a lot of municipalities had to request an extension in order to not meet the March 31st deadline. You all didn't do that. You all did issue within the timeframe that was required. So it's an all-in-all clean report, and if you all have any questions or comments, I'd be happy to take those now.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? You know, Emil, if the team screwed up a little, we'd have some questions and comments, but excellent job. It's great to hear, yeah. You know, it really, it speaks a lot for the quality and professionalism of the entire team in finance, and hearing this report is just awesome, because it gives all the residents the confidence to know that, nobody likes to pay their taxes, but it gives the confidence to know it's being spent right and it's being tracked. So, thank you, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Do we want to do a resolution?
Is this a...
Yeah, Mayor.
Is it a resolution?
There's not a resolution, but just a motion.
To accept it?
To accept, yes, for the annual report.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the financial report.
Okay. Okay. Is there any discussion? Anybody want to reject this report? Seeing none, is there any discussion from the public on this item? Seeing none, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great job. Thank you. All right. Item number seven, public comment. Do we have any public comment this evening? No? All right. Item number eight, board reports. Any board reports this evening? All right.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. George Morris, Chair of the Drainage Board. We met last March 23rd, and we basically, we were talking about our new upcoming projects on the 63rd Street and 54th Place Drainage Projects. And we mailed out our notices, and we did everything in preparation for that. And this upcoming meeting on April the 18th at 7:00 PM, we're going to be continuing and talking about that, as well as having an advisor there, and the public's welcome to attend the meeting as well. In our previous meeting, we also talked about the fill permits and everything else like that. We're trying to come up with a resolution on that and solutions for different things that's moving forward, at a good pace, but it could be faster, et cetera, but we're coming up with different ideas, et cetera. So we're trying to put that one to bed. So anybody that wants to come out to our next meeting, again, on April the 18th, please attend our meeting. We're going to have an advisor there to talk about the different projects that are on, again, 63rd Street and 54th Place. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you, George. Any other board reports? Seeing none, council member comments?
Yeah, I'll go.
Great. Thank you, Gary.
I'll be really brief here, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, as usual, for coming. Just want to make a few announcements, just a reminders. One is the DMV Flowmobile is going to be here at Town Hall on the 26th. I'm making an appointment through Debra. Wonderful service, I encourage you to use it if you need, if you have DMV issues or things that have to be done. We have hazmat at the barn on the 29th of April with, it has shredding, prescription drug drop-off, bring your old tires, bring fluorescent bulbs, old paint, whatever you have, clean your garage out, that's the appropriate time to do it. You never, you don't even have to get out of your car. So it's a great, it's a great service. We had two great events in a space of seven days that worked really, really well. We all know about the 5K, that was earlier in the program, but we also had a town-wide Easter egg hunt with the Easter Bunny at the barn a few days later. That went really, really well. Kids loved it, the adults loved it, the bunny loved it, the bunny wrangler and photographer loved it. Everybody had a great time with it, so it all worked out really well. And just to reiterate what Chairman George mentioned about the drainage, at the drainage meeting on the 18th, it's going to be for country estates and for Green Meadows projects. Public is not only welcomed, we want you to be there, ask questions, so that we can give you proper answers, and nobody's in the dark as to what these projects entail. And I'll wrap it up with that, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Gary.
Yeah, Bob?
I'll be very brief this evening, folks. I had oral surgery yesterday, so I won't be saying much. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Have a plate in my mouth.
Due to brevity, I usually would go over the monthly citations. I'm going to bring it up at the next meeting, so just ask everybody to stay dry.
Great, thank you, David. So I'm going to be long-winded tonight.
All right, all the time is yours, Jim.
Jeez.
The pressure's on, man.
The pressure's on, I'm telling you. I thank you for coming. I do want to mention that I sit on the Broward County Water Advisory Board, and the advisory board has been working diligently for two years trying to correct some of the flooding that you see today. The board is working with the Corps of Engineers, and as you know, the Corps of Engineers does nothing rapidly, it takes a long time. In 2016, the board came up with an idea, it's called Document the Floods, and what it is, it's a web-based crowdsourcing tool to collect photos and observations from members of the public about the frequency and extent of flooding due to either rainfall or high tide, also known as king tide. This effort is the first of its kind in South Florida and aims to collect, compile, analyze, and view flood occurrences at the county level. Almost 800 flood reports have been collected. South Florida climate is technically a subtropical rainforest, and they, the Water Advisory Board is pushing real hard for the Army Corps of Engineers and the South Florida Water Management District to prepare more quickly for the flooding that will soon worsen in Broward County. So they are working with it. I get to hear these reports come in, and then we get this flood, and nothing has still been done, but they are working on it, I can assure you of that. And hopefully, in the future, we have a few projects up just a little bit to the north of us that will store water. There's a huge reservoir that they're working on, they haven't filled it yet, but they're looking to get started with that. They keep promising at any time that that'll get started. I drove through my district yesterday during the rain. We have some new drains that were put in, some of them still need some work. I know that a contractor had some problems on some, but there was no water in the streets in District 3. I drove through the entire area, and the drains are doing their job. Yards are flooded, they're holding the water like they're supposed to, but the streets are clear. Where the drainage went in, there's still a few areas where the drainage hasn't been put in, and they have water there. You heard George mention that the 54th Place Drainage is going to take place, April the 18th. I will go around personally before that time and knock on the doors of probably 15, 16 residents that live on that dead-end street, and invite them to come to this meeting on April the 18th, so that they can hear what's fixing to take place in their community. We promised outreach to the community, and we're going to provide that. So, you know, at least they'll be notified. I think the town has sent a letter, but I'm going to go knock on doors to door this weekend and personally invite them to come and see, you know, what the drainage is all about. Florida Power and Light's putting in underground power in Green Meadows. I have some concerns, and we'll talk to Florida Power and Light about that later, that some of these boxes are at water level or going to be below water level when the floods come in. I took pictures of those also, so hopefully, maybe something will get done about that. And with that, I'd like to say thank you for coming and just stay dry. Thank you, Mayor. All right, thank you, Jim. I have a few things I wanted to touch on as well. One of the things that I've heard a lot about in the last 30 days, you always hear it on and off, but in the last 30 days, I've heard a lot about it, is noise and parties and the disruptions that that all brings. And I, I'd like to revisit the noise ordinance, I'd like to have that brought back to the council and, excuse me, and take a look at it again. I know there's a few things on it that I'd like to change, but what I'd like to do is kind of have a workshop, a discussion time with the residents, where we would, you know, they're all advertised, but make a special effort so that residents are aware that this is going to be a topic of discussion. As I've talked to a number of residents, there, there's some good ideas out there that I think we should all hear together and consider. There's some things right off the top that I think can be adjusted. Right now, you can have six permits a year. I think that's too many. If you have six, you have a party every other month, and it's disruptive to your neighbors, it's going to feel, as a neighbor, it's going to feel like that's happening every other weekend. It's not going to be good. So I think there's a number of things that we can, we can look and tweak there. I think we need to look at it from an enforceability standpoint. It's very subjective right now, and there are a lot of challenges to how to make it more objective, but I think that needs to be part of our discussion, to see how we can do that. And so there's a number of things I think we can do to try and improve that. And it's, you know, it's all about, you know, we want to be able to celebrate in our town, but we need to be, do it respectful for our neighbors as well. Everybody moved out here for peace and quiet and to enjoy the rural lifestyle and the ability to enjoy the peaceful enjoyment of their property. So there's a balance there, and it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge to meet it, but I'd like to work on that. One other item that is ordinance-related, and that is, I'd like to, we, in the past, we've discussed about the home business ordinance, getting our ordinance aligned with the state, and I'd like to go ahead and proceed with that and get that to the council. Aside from that, there is just a couple of things, other things that have been around and kind of hearing a lot about, and I just want to add my voice to it. We've had some vehicles stolen. Let me just repeat what I know you've already heard. Please take your fobs out of the car, please take them into your, into your homes. Davie Police has a program, you know, nine o'clock, I forget what they, they got a catchy name for it, but basically, at nine o'clock, you go and you lock the doors, you make sure the fobs are out of your car, you make sure the mail is out of your mailbox, and your home is secure. And I would just secure, I would just encourage everybody to secure their homes in that way. It'll save, it'll save a lot of aggravation. And the other thing is the mail, if you're mailing something, a check or something that is financially oriented, we've got a mailbox right out front here at Town Hall, you can drop it off there. There's post offices in Weston and Pembroke Pines that are relatively close by. I know there's another mailbox that was close to where I used to work in the Weston area, where it was easy to drop things off. So there's mailboxes all around. I would encourage you to use those. Don't put a check in your mailbox. Whether you put the flag up or not, don't put a check in your mailbox. It's just, it's not, it's not good. And as I said before, if, you know, that nine o'clock comes around, if you haven't already gotten your mail out of the mailbox, please go ahead and get it, because we just want to make our community as less, as least desirable as possible for those folks, you know. The object is to catch them and get them off the streets, but the next best thing is to just have them go someplace else. So let's make their life miserable. All right. And with that, that's all I have. Legal comments, Keith?
Sure, Mayor. But I mentioned Russell, maybe we'll get a printout of that noise ordinance and actually email it to all the council members, so that everyone can start looking at it.
Great.
Early.
Thank you.
And I will speak to Jeff Cadums, who drafts the comporting ordinances on the home business and ask him to bring it forward. I'll text him in a minute.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Couple real quick things. Congratulations to Detective Habalis. To do what you do for the number of years you do, have done it is a true accomplishment. So you're a wonderful asset to our town. We're going to miss you, and thank you for so many years of service and service to our communities. Appreciate it. Emil and Rich, congratulations on the spectacular report, you know, from jumping in as quickly as you did, hit the ground running and do that is an enormous accomplishment. I've been to three different cities over the past couple of weeks, and none of them have had stellar reports or comments from an auditor, so truly, congratulations to both of you and your team for a job well done. Congratulations, finally, to Seek Society and the incredible 5K, and I think they raised $11,000 for the town, which is 10% more than last year, which is absolutely fantastic. So with that, everything's good. I don't want to tell you the not-good stuff. So with that, I'll turn it over to Andy.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor spoke before about some of the drainage projects we've done out in his area, and I gave you all some photos, which I know the clerk's office has teed up, and they can put on, so the public can get a sense of that, just to show some of those areas how quickly it drained from five o'clock yesterday till 8:30 this morning. It's some really, really good success. So hats off to Rod and Public Works and the projects, the Drainage Board, their input, the council's oversight on that. It's really just outstanding evidence that what we're doing is working, and we need to keep on that track. So that was great. Emil and the finance staff, congratulations. One of the things I worried most about in this position was a change in finance directors, and how that was going to impact the town. And I've told the council over the course of the year how things were going and how pleased I was, and just how incredible and how smooth that transition was. But for all of you to hear that from the auditors tonight is certainly meaningful. So we made a good choice a year ago, and the town is in very good hands with a wonderful team underneath them, so absolutely great news on that front. Tying into that, budget season is well upon us. All the departmental budget meetings have been completed, and finance staff will take that information and start to massage that into what we, what we need to do or want to do, and put those documents together for our individual one-on-ones with you to get council input as we go forward. I know they'll get input from the advisory boards as well, and so that process is well underway. I mean, we don't get to the hearings on the budget until September, and workshop in August, but here we are in April, and it's well underway, so things are progressing well. Jeff, I wish you all the best, as I said before, but the guy sitting behind you is going to fill your shoes and do a great job. So just an official welcome to Detective Velasquez, who's going to be joining us in Jeff's slot. As you saw, you have big shoes to fill, but I think you'll be able to do it, and we're lucky to have you. So we're glad you're here, Andy. Thank you. Thank you. And other than that, Mayor, I think, I think I'm in good shape. Thanks. Yeah?
And you talk about the speed.
Oh, yes, thank you. As you all recall, what's now two or three months ago, you guys gave us the go-ahead to order in one fixed speed sign so that we could try it. It came in today. We have it here. And, and so, if we can get a little bit of input from you, I, I would suggest one of our, our biggest problem areas is the 185, 186 cut through with number of traffic and people speeding. So, I, I would suggest to you, if it's all right with council, that at the, the north end there, 186, close to Griffin, not far from there, might be a good place to put that. And it does a lot more than just flash the speed, telling people what they're doing to slow them down. It generates all kinds of charts and graphs with weekly, daily, hourly, even half-hour data, the number of vehicles, the number of speeders, average speeds, peak speeds. It's going to be very, very helpful to us in collecting data. So, I'm looking forward to getting that out there unless the council would like to put it somewhere else and I'm certainly receptive to that. But we'll work on getting that installed and seeing how effective it is and how useful that data is so that we'll be able to have future discussions with all of you within your districts and, and other locations where you might envision some, some signs. So, did I get that, council member? I know you and I had talked about it and I...
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Is that location okay or do you guys have a better idea on where you might want to put that?
I, I think it's a great location. I really do. I think the only question in my mind is where on that road it should go. We don't want it too close to Griffin because traffic is already slowing down at that point.
I would get incoming traffic into the neighborhood from Griffin.
Once again, you want to make sure they have a, you know, that they're...
Right.
They're accelerating, you know, so we just want to make sure it's in a spot. I don't know if we can look at some of the previous traffic counts, not really counts, but the traffic information that was done before to see where, where, where the, you know, the speeding is the biggest issue. Maybe even Davie PD can, you know, where they're handing out tickets and things where they're seeing.
We'll get some suggestions there and obviously we want to be not right next to a speed hump where people are going to slow down.
Exactly.
So, we'll make sure we pick the ideal location that way.
Perfect. Good.
But we look forward to getting that out there and seeing what kind of data we get back.
Yeah, good.
All right. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Anybody have any concern with that location? Are we, we good?
No, just need to figure out where to put it.
Yeah.
I'm thinking mid, at the midpoint.
Right.
After the dog leg. It's, that's where I always get passed.
That's kind of where I'm...
I get passed.
Yeah.
When I go up with that and I'm doing the speed limit.
Yeah.
Somebody passes me usually at that, at that point.
Right. Right, I agree. We need to...
Steve, is that a residential area on both sides?
It is on both sides.
So, would we need permission from a resident to stick one of those up in front of their house? I mean, it's going to go in front of somebody's home, right?
It is. It is. I mean, it's going to be in the easement, the right-of-way there.
Right.
So, it's, I think we, we have, we have the right to do it, but it would, it wouldn't hurt to speak with the resident for sure.
Find out who, right, okay.
All right, awesome. Okay, item number 12.
Item number 12 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida approving a change order to the agreement with Vetted Security Solutions, Inc. in the amount of $15,087.32 to install a solar-powered license plate reader camera along the northern portion of Griffin Road right-of-way and approximately 128th Avenue, authorizing the town administrator to issue a new purchase order for this change order and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, is there any public discussion on this item? Yeah, Noel?
Bill Hollisworth, 199th Avenue. What is the change order? I understand that it's additional money, but what is the amount of money that it's additional and where's it coming from? Is it coming out of a special fund or is it coming out of general fund?
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, would you like me to address that?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, is there, is there any other public comment? Seeing none. Yeah, Russell, could you?
Certainly, yes. So, the change order is required because we had initially proposed to have a, an LPR system in the median of Griffin Road and approximately 127th Avenue. And going through the county's RLA process, the revocable license agreement process, they determined that we would not be able to place that in the median there. So, they said you can basically place one on the south side, in the town right-of-way, on the south side of Griffin Road, but we could not place one in the median. So, in order to provide a camera facing westbound or catching westbound drivers, we needed to find a location on the, on the north side. So, we, we've identified the, the right-of-way, the northern right-of-way on Griffin Road to place this. Unfortunately, there's no electric there and to place electric out there would be a tremendous undertaking. You'd have to jack and bore underneath Griffin Road. It'd be very, very cost prohibitive to do so. So, the solution proposed was to put a solar-powered camera there. So, this change order is to provide for the additional pole that was not initially contemplated. We were only contemplating one pole. Now, we have to have two, one for the south side, one for the north side. So, the pole, the cameras and obviously the staging and the work there for the additional pole. That's the difference. And the cost for that, as outlined in the report and in the resolution, is $15,087.32. The funding is coming from our Public Safety Police Machinery and Equipment Account, which is where we had originally allocated the money for this entire LPR program. So, that money is there.
Great. Thank you, Russell. And your time is up. All right, great. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Yeah, Bob?
I have a question for the gentleman who's here from Vetted Solutions. Maybe you can come up to the microphone. So, everything else is powered by electricity from the FPNL poles. This one is different and it's going to have some batteries in it. I'm assuming NiCad, you know, there's some sort of rechargeable batteries that the system will charge all day. How long do they last? Because nothing else is going to require annual maintenance. How long do you think the batteries will go for us?
In terms of operating or life?
Life.
So, they're Lipo lithium ion batteries. So, typically we see those last, before they start degrading performance, about five years.
Five years. What'll it cost us to replace them?
For those two, I don't have that figure off the top of my head.
Ballpark.
Five thousand, give or take? Don't have my...
Five thousand for batteries?
Correct. Yeah, they're lithium ion batteries.
I know what they are.
Fifty amp hour batteries. But to replace the charging and all of that, I don't have those figures in top, in front of me.
Okay.
But they, they will last a long time. That, those batteries, lithium ion, they come with a warranty and you'll see those outlast the equipment itself. The batteries will last longer than the cameras that will, so.
Maybe you can let us know. Maybe you could send us officially what it would cost to replace them.
Absolutely.
The way we have real numbers.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm confident those batteries will last, like, very confident those, and the solutions we have deployed around the country, so. Is that good?
Great, thank you. All right, seeing no other questions, if we can please call the roll.
Mayor, just one other clarification. I misstated. The, the, the money is going to be placed into that Public Safety Police Machinery and Equipment Account, but it's actually going to be coming from first, it's going to come from our unassigned general fund, fund balance first.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you. All right. If we can please call the roll.
Certainly. Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?